Okay, well welcome. Thanks for coming. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session according to Idaho Code Section 74-206?
I make a motion that we go into executive session according to Idaho Code Section 74-206 to consider a violation dismissed like just when you were here.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, one on favor of Percy.
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Okay, motion clear for executive session. We'll see you in a bit.
Hi, welcome to our...
Okay, we have a motion to the general.
I'll make the motion that will approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Pauline Bieber-Kirby?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, agenda is approved. Let's move on to celebrations and communications.
Chairman and trustees, it's my honor to talk about some really great things that have been going on in our school district. But I think all these students here that are going to be presenting tonight are really the show for us. So I'll be quick so they can get on with what they want to share with you. At our last board meeting, and Kim Beckhale can talk about this a little bit more, but she mentioned this project that she was working with student leaders in Cuna Middle, Cuna High, initial Fremont and Swan. And so there's some great pictures and they had 4,000 stickers that they put on cups and bags to help kind of get the message of not providing alcohol to minors. So part of our red ribbon efforts as well. Would you want to say anything else, Kim, to that?
No, I was just really amazed. It was, like I said last time, it was, they let us go off and kind of do our own thing instead of... And so I sent a summary to the Idaho Office of Drug Policy with some of these pictures and a summary of what we did, and they said, "Just let us know what you need next time." And because they really liked that we were able to do this with the community, so.
So good collaboration there. And then I'll talk about this in just a moment, but just to celebrate our first meeting in the community council, that's what my update is about, so let's kind of quickly go through that. And then, just a future celebration, on Thursday, Ross Elementary students will be presenting at the State Idaho School Arts Association Conference, and they're going to share their recess club and the projects that they do at recess. So I'm really proud of these young people.
It's going to be fun. They have activities planned for people to do at their booth, so it's good.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, as you know, the Hubbard STEM Lab ribbon cutting happened a couple weeks ago, and there are some great pictures. There's a video there. We won't play that tonight because we are moving on to doing some other things, but really great fun experience with our Lego lab. Oh, there it goes. Sorry. It's just like, yay! Kind of thing. Lots of cheering. And Chairman, if you want me to, I'll just keep going.
Please.
And then, as is our process every month, to celebrate those individuals in our school district and in our community, and also students who live our values within the Cuna School District. I'm just going to quickly go through some of these amazing people. We have Jess, Dave, Rhonda, Mackenzie, Rachel, Kevin. He's usually here. He's probably here somewhere. No? Kristi, Mandy, and Laura, and Kara, who was a former student of mine. Go Kara, love it. As a parent now. Jane, Shanna, Yvette, Alicia, Ashley. That's not Ashley. That's not Ashley, but it was Ashley, so we'll make sure we get the correct picture in there. Just caught it. And then, so those are our great Cuna Way Award winners for this last month. And then, in your packet was a communication that went to all of the board members and our response to that communication. Thank you, Chairman and Trustees.
Okay. We've been running along. Let's go to this, what everyone's been waiting for, the school spotlight with Fremont Middle School.
That's okay. We'll go to them first.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Board, thank you for letting us bring a full house tonight to present some awesome stuff that we're doing. But one of the things we wanted to talk about is our theme, our mantra for the year was Level Up. And our point to that is, you know, no matter where you are, there's always room to improve. And so with that, my amazing Vice Principal, instructional coach, got all together. And if you go in our building, we've got all of our bulletin boards, our video game theme. And it's, you know, tied to Abbott, tied to teachers doing Abbott strategies in their class and just acknowledging those different things, but also different Abbott and character traits that people, the students can remember. And so, we did staff t-shirts and they've got, you know, Level Up on the back of them. And so it's just, it's not just, it's more than a mantra, it's a culture in our building. And that's, you know, you don't have success in a building if you don't build a culture. And so, using the video game theme, we branded FMS with Level Up messages and acknowledgements. This is in our staff hallway, going back to the staff lounge, and says, "Don't be an injured bird, be a happy hawk." And this is where staff members can come in and put positive messages, either about one of their colleagues or something positive that's happened with them. "Had a great day today," you know, because tried my first time at a Socratic seminar, or whatever. And so, there's, you see the little envelope here with the little hawk heads on it, and people can write the messages and stick them up, stick them up on the board. So it's about keeping things positive. This is our Crushing Wicker board, and wickers are those standards for having Neil Harris from some of our Abbott kids in just a bit. But this is also celebrating our teachers when we go around and we're taking a look in classrooms. And you can't see them, but these are different teachers in pictures of different Abbott strategies that they're implementing in their classes. And so, this is out in the main hallway, just outside the main office, where everybody gets to see that. And this is down by our seventh grade hall, and this just talks about, this just reminds kids, "These are the things I can control." And so, again, sticking with, you know, the video game theme, they got controllers on it. "I can control what I say, what I do, what I think, what I eat, how I react, and my choices." And so, just one of those reminders for kiddos as they're cruising through. And then this is, this is just Level Up to a Great Year. You just, you know, this is in our main hallway. If you walk into the gym, this is on the right-hand side, under one of our bulletin boards. So, we really took this serious and branded our school with it. You know, we didn't just make t-shirts and it got, you know, stuffed in everybody's drawers after the first day we wore them. And so, but anyway, with that, how we've leveled up. I started off with our amazing students and staff. You're going to get to see and hear from some of the students. You know, I'm biased, but I think our students are second to none. But our staff, we're not here, and we don't do the things without the amazing staff that I have. And I know every administrator's going to say that, but I truly feel blessed to be part of the team. I'm part of it at Fremont. And so, we don't have the success we do. We don't build the culture we do. We don't have any of those things without our staff and the amazing things they do. So I could literally spend the whole board meeting time tonight talking about every single one of my staff members, but I won't do that. Some of the cool things, we're in our third year of Abbott implementation. We have our daily win time for the Student Intervention Extension. You heard from Ms. Manuel last month, the no cell phones or electronic devices has been a game changer when it comes to climate and culture in our building. I wish we would have kept better data had we known we were going to go this direction. Just off the top of my head, our discipline referrals are much less than they used to be. And even bigger, I think, are referrals to the counselor. I bet are a quarter to a third of what they have been. And so, that's just one of those things. But we have PBIS incentives for iReady iSAC growth. We started with doing the CICA interim assessments this year, just getting as much data as we can about our student achievement and how using that data to be able to figure out how we can better serve our kids. And then, we're part of the VSU AMLC Math Project. I think we have a meeting coming up with Michelle on the 30th. And that's just to help us learn and grow as math leaders in our building. And then, we took part of a vague education project as part of Red Ribbon Week. You guys probably, when they brought you in to the cafeteria and they presented. And we partnered with the VSU Nursing Department on that, and they came in, they had students, and it was a project that they did with our kiddos. And so, some really cool things. Again, much more goes into it, but these are just some of the highlights of some things that we've done to level up this year. So, you didn't come here to listen to this, but big ugly mug. So, we're going to start off with some of our kiddos. And so, we brought in some of the kids from our Abbott, from our Abbott class, our French class, and our Spanish class, and we're going to go in that order. So I'll have the Abbott students come on up first. You can hear some more.
Hi, I'm Nicola Fontana, and Abbott helps us students with our critical thinking skills, inquiry, organizational skills, speech, reading, writing, problem-solving skills, time management, and collaboration. Abbott can help students understand more complex questions and answers to questions. We use planners and Abbott binders to keep us organized during school and have all of our subjects divided in their own sections. Abbott provides educational support that students need to encourage college and career readiness and success. Abbott supports students in handling schoolwork through the development of Abbott. In our Abbott classes, in the Socratic seminars, philosophical chairs, posters, share and build ideas on research about new articles and topics, etc. In conclusion, Abbott is very important to school, to students, and to help each student learn the skills to be successful in life.
My name is Metaparoso, and Abbott has taught me grow, which stands for Get Ready to Learn, Review What You Know, Open Mind, and Wonder and Ask. So by using this strategy in class can actually increase your success rate because your mind is focusing on the subject that you're doing, and everything is kind of, so everything is less chaotic. And same goes with SMART goals. When I'm trying to complete a goal that I have in life and I use this strategy, everything goes by way smoother and more effective because I'm using specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. So overall, Abbott has taught me the importance of growing as a person and be able to make decisions to better my work and to take other people's advice and knowledge into consideration.
Abbott helps me in school because it teaches strategies that give me skills that apply for school and throughout our life. The strategies that we have been taught in class are grow and wicker. Wicker stands for writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. The writing teaches me how to express my thoughts non-verbally, and inquiry teaches me to ask deeper and thoughtful questions. Collaboration teaches me how to work together with peers and get other people's perspectives. And then, organization, it keeps me prepared and ready to learn. And then, reading, it gives me a better knowledge of words that can allow me to understand a concept better. And then, grow, which stands for Get Ready to Learn, review, open-minded, and wonder and ask. The Get Ready to Learn teaches me to be prepared and ready. Review teaches me to go over past work defects and errors. Open-minded teaches me to be ready and just be teachable. And then, wonder and ask, which allows me to get different perspectives or point of views from other people and to solve my questions. And these two shabbies allow me to come prepared and be successful.
Good evening. My name is Andy Hamilton, and I believe that Abbott helps students understanding how to expand on what teachers cannot have time to teach, especially with the core. It teaches us how to understand how not only to take more complex notes, it also helps us with understanding what teachers are trying to teach and how it can benefit us in the future. Abbott is a long-term schooling that can use for every day in the workplace, school, and even at home. And if you're in Abbott for three to four years, you can get a Fulbright Scholarship, and sometimes you can even pick the college of your choice. It helps with understanding what options you have out there. And even for some further research, colleges have never seen so many freshmen that have been in Abbott classes understand what they're trying to teach in a more complex area than people who have not been in Abbott. Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring up the students, some of our students from our French class. This little background on this, our teacher that teaches Spanish, we needed one more period to fill her schedule, and so we're like, whoa. And so we sit, and she's like, "Well, I can teach French too." Like, what? That's awesome. And so it's funny because some of the kids got in there and like, "Ah, French!" And now you talk to the kids, and they're like, "This is my favorite class." And so, if you ever get a chance to go into Ms. LaHell's class, her classroom management is engagement with kids, and so it's amazing. So, do we have from the French class? Did all your partners abandon you?
Yeah, I was like, I hope somebody's going to come.
We actually had, I think, two more people, three more people that were supposed to be here. So, all right, I'll stand here with you. And mind you, Wendy just knew she was going to be doing this this morning at about eight o'clock. All right, the Spanish group has got a little skit for you. Come on up, guys. So, to give you some background, what these guys have been learning in Spanish class is how to order, like at a restaurant or something like that. So very applicable and relevant to daily life, so. I don't know. You guys did the rules. Are you missing people too?
Only Jack. Jack has the good last one.
Okay, all right. So I'll let you guys take it.
To camaraderas está aquí pronto.
Disfruten las papitas.
Salud. Adios.
Don't you wish your drinks came out that time?
That was from Top Notch.
But, so, that's just an example of some of the cool things that are going on at Fremont Middle School. And I know great things, same things are happening at Cuna Middle School as well. And so, just blessed to be part of the middle school team in our district and have opportunity to work with kids and parents like that every day. So thank you for letting us come and invade you for the day. So, you guys, you guys are welcome. Parents and students, you guys are welcome. I mean, we won't offend anybody.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Good job, guys.
Good job.
Okay, so superintendent report, can we go back to that, the Kinn Youth Council?
You bet. Thank you. I'll be very quick in kind of explaining the youth council. Just, we actually have a website, thanks to Troy, on this. So just a little history. Last spring, Emily Wright came, she serves on the superintendent advisory council as a youth representative. And we have struggled for, oh gosh, a long time having consistent attendance with students at the youth council because they're busy after school. They're into sports, they're working, they're doing homework, those kinds of things. And we usually meet in the evenings to accommodate parents. And so Emily came to me and she said, I think we need to start a separate youth council. And I said, I think you're right. And she helped me start to brainstorm like what, what it could look like. And she talked about meeting during the day so kids could be there. Well, fast forward from last spring to really early this fall, councilmen Bruce and Biggs came to me and said, hey, we're thinking about starting a youth council. And I said, well, so are we. Could we collaborate? And we all have these great ideas of what we want for, for our youth council. And we know when we ask the youth that they're going to have even bigger ideas. So the first meeting was a week and a half ago. Unfortunately, as excited as I was, I was recovering from COVID. So I missed that first meeting. And so Kim jumped in, and she was so excited about how great the kids were and their ideas that she's like, can I continue to be a helper and advisor in this? And so I'm going to have her talk. And I think there's some students from the youth council. You want to come on up here? You would introduce yourself? So one of our, one of our goals was to not only listen for great ideas to better our community and our schools from our youth, but to have them understand local government. Because I think local government's towards that, right? Where you get to see the immediate impact of decisions. Would you ladies mind introducing yourselves? Okay?
Oh. I am Adisa Service, and I am the treasurer for the U.S. Council.
I'm Olivia Long, and I am the secretary for the U.S. Council.
I'm Hannah Young, and I'm your vice president.
I'm Alan Uvi, and I think I'm student leader.
You're a student leader for, by being involved.
I missed the first meeting too, so.
We're in this together, right? We're burning.
Could you guys give some of your impressions of the meeting so far, like kind of your hopes? Yeah, so for impressions, we can start off with building all of the ideas together. Everybody had something to communicate about and new ideas. And I think we all kind of just bonded over that meeting, throwing out like glorifying not only our failures but successes over the years. And I think that that was just really important for us to all get together and kind of just talk.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
So we went over some ground rules, and I think everyone agreed on a lot of them. I think it was nice to know that like we all shared some of the same like respects for each other. And one of the biggest ones was respect and like being on time and like just, I think it was really nice to know that we all were on like the same terms.
Great.
I felt like it was really good to collaborate and coming together on committees that we can implement for our community and to be able to agree upon those and start building a good culture.
What I heard from these ladies was it sounded like it was a really, really good meeting and that we are building a firm foundation for our future and the school district.
Thank you, ladies, for being here. You're going to see a little bit about what the school district is like as compared to the city council, right? Some similarities and differences.
This is my first time seeing this in general.
Yeah, good. Thank you, guys, for being here. I appreciate it. I'll see you on Thursday, right? I'm going to have Kim give some of her observations, too. But the, the nice thing, I'll add this, and you guys know this, the city council said we have funds to give to the students to decide what to do to better, to improve the city and/or the school district. So that's kind of exciting to be able to be in charge of a budget, to put some of their projects in action. Would you like to add anything, Kim?
Well, I, I'm so, Wendy was sick and she said, can you take over in this? And I'm like, sure. But I had no context, I mean, really of what to do, but Councilman Bruce and Councilman Biggs were there, and they were so excited to just get things started off. They were just jumping in, weren't they? They were so excited to, to have you all there. And so we had all, all of this group of kids. We had some middle school kids and then the high school kids. And I wasn't, I wasn't sure, you know, what, what we're going to do first, but then like we decided to do the ground rules and do an introductions. But what I, but what I, what amazed me is that when they were talking about like who wants to run for different offices, all the, all these hands went up for like wanting to, to be part of, you know, helping to run, run the, the group. But then, and then it came to committees, and all hands went up about wanting to be on different committees. And so there was just so much engagement from, from, and you can see the excitement in these girls, but all of them, the middle, the middle school kids, nobody felt like they were left out of that group, did they? They were all able to speak and talk. And I was like, this is so much fun. I said, Wendy, can I still come? It was just, they were just, they're going to be great. They're going to be, it's going to be fun to watch the city and the school district in this partnership. Just watch these kids grow and you're invited, they're going, you're going to do a presentation to the city council, right?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, and they were just like ready to.
I just found out that today.
But they were just excited about going to do that. I would have been like, but I mean, so it's fun to just to see this enthusiasm and excitement. I was just, I was really tickled to be a part of it, you know?
I think it's awesome that you guys are doing this and starting out so young to see what it takes and what happens in school boards and council meetings. So I heard someone say, you know what project, you guys already have a project that you're working on?
So we are working on, sorry, so we are working on starting our, a logo is where we're going to start off first, and then we're going to make shirts. And then we all have different committees where we elaborate on, and I think we started.
There was a committee on doing outside projects. Like, we talked about having a highway, like names.
Like adopting a highway.
Yeah, adopting a highway. We talked about doing that. What else did we talk about? The logo, shirts, and I think.
The presentation.
The presentation, and I'm pretty sure that's all that we got done for that meeting.
So they'll have time on Thursday to kind of reconnect with their teams to talk a little bit more about, yeah, with their committees, what they want to do. Say, please come back and share some time. Yeah, absolutely.
We'd love to.
That'd be awesome. Thank you, ladies. I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, Chairman Trustee.
Thanks.
I can be into some of my things. We can open our weeks, and it'd be nice if we could open our hours because I know when we get down to some other issues, I think to look at and post it.
Yeah, the links, the links aren't working.
Yeah. I just think that ours wasn't down here, so.
Director ready. Director ready? Sorry, we might need your help.
None of our links are working.
None of our links are working, which I'd like to kind of have my link point that down to policies and.
Director Graves, can you turn the table over to you?
Yeah.
Chairman Trustee, this is typically a presentation I do in September, but I think, I think our agendas were full and I kept getting bumped. Just a reminder of what commission vision. Elmer and I are both over the organizational strength pillar. And so this is one of our projects, and it's, it's a project of probably every school district in the world, but ours, we take it very serious, is that project number two, recruitment and retention. For me, this is the second time that I presented this, so I'm able to give you kind of a comparison from last year. Then we were able to show you the survey data from our staff in July. So just to see, what did that, how did that affect turnover and staff retention as far as, and remember, we're just talking about certified employees. So this gives you a picture and it puts a, last year's data that I presented to you and this year's data. Give you a second to kind of look at it and see if there's any questions.
What was the naked attempt?
So I assumed this was going to be a question. So this just showed you that in 2223, we had 400 certified employees or positions.
Oh, I'm moving.
This year, we're down to 390.
Got it. Is that because of the ultimate certificate?
No, four of those positions were ESAR positions that were in that academic intervention. We got rid of four of the five secondary positions, kind of getting ready for the loss of ESAR funding. The elementaries kept theirs and initial ones kept theirs.
Okay, so that's why it's from the ESAR.
And then six of the positions, about August 1st, our enrollment numbers just weren't coming up, so we held back six positions. And at the start of the year, we did bring those back.
Okay.
Another one that I thought maybe was going to be a question. Last year, we didn't have the category of contracted services. So four of our vacant positions were filled with contracted services. Not that this is a brand new thing for us, we've done it in the past with CBRS. This year, we did it with four certified positions, two SLPs, speech and language pathologists, a physical, a PT, and OT. So it's the positions that in our world, we pay them at a different rate than the, not the real world, because we're the real world as well, but outside of education.
Yeah.
And yet, this was a place, people service, that we saw just a struggle to find people. We went to contracted services for that. If you're a fast mathematician and you say these numbers, Tony Hough 73, these, the 12 here are represented in different locations just because one of our alternative, no, you have, you have a certification. Or, or sometimes our teachers, we ask them to teach outside. Example is our new EL teacher at the middle school. She is a certified teacher, has been for 20 plus years elementary, but she decided to go E R, adding the EL endorsement, which makes her alternate route, but she's located in this section. So these people are also located. Most of them fall in that first year, what, a four-year. I think, is your map checker in CP probably make no mistake.
I'm not that fast.
These numbers, people said, really better. And this is our data as of November 3rd. At some point, we had to end. Just like you talked about executive session, you're always changing positions when you have 400 employees, but those will be on next year's graph. Any other questions on this one? This just tells you where they went and to compare to last year's same comparison. The number that, that stayed in the lead was, went to another district and stayed. Last year, it was 32% of our people that left. This isn't 32% of the 400, this is 32% of the 68, and 27% of the 73. Went to another district and stayed. This is the order now for this. A category that jumped way up was transferred to a district. So this number was used in, in telling our story by other people saying a lot of people left our district. 14 other people that we had to fill were people that were already working for us. So to punish us for like Principal Clemens, for example, she was a vice principal, there was a principal position, so she stepped into that causing a vice principal position to be open behind her. So just to kind of. Left a principal position to come work as our C I D director. Sounds so cool when you say it that way. But kind of a picture, we had a lot more leave of absences this year.
You know, I kind of like to see a little more specifics on this, like, did they go to another district out of state because their husband moved and they moved with them? Or is it because, why? I mean, I'd like to see it broken down a little bit, or retired, I get that, they retired. But for some of them, I'd just like to know why they left our district so that we can take a look at that for that one strategic pillar, to see what we could do to maybe be better as a district at retaining some of them. I just would be curious. I don't know if that's something legally we can do. Yeah. But just kind of. We can always ask. You can always ask. I mean, they don't have to answer, but I'd just like to see why, why did they go to a different district? Was it something that we're not catching to retain type of? Yep. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that we need to pull out of the consent agenda? Anything that we want to come up? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, the second.
I'll second.
Okay. Here's Steve, Chris, Russ. Aye. Aye. Kim.
Aye.
Joining.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, okay. Do you have any delegations?
You're the best.
Okay. Unfinished business, letters of support from commercial development, principal Reno.
Chip Grant, members of the board. This, as a critical agency for the city, normally we respond for developments of residential. The city has asked us to start responding in, to, to commercial developments. And as you know, commercial developments, we have officially taken a non-stance long because we know that they provide a tax relief for our, our, our community. And so the city has asked us, asked to get letters of support or rejection from you. And so we came to you to give direction on, would you like a letter of support for more commercial or would you allow like letters of support for commercial? If you have any questions.
We need to support more commercial. I, I, yeah, right. That'd be yes because of the tax base.
Yes. We assume that, but we need formal action from you because Danielle already just.
So we need to make an action on this?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
So you need us to make a motion that for, to allow you and Danielle to create a letter of support for commercial development in the city of Kinn.
So what does that mean? Not a Dennis.
So that means when you're presented with a commercial, you would just give them the letter saying that we support the commercial development.
Correct. And we would add in there to support a district with, you know, partnerships with them because as we have C P offerings, scholarships, and those types of things. But we'll craft that letter, we'll give a template, we'll provide it to you.
Not only will it help our taxes, but it's also going to help the community to have businesses out here. So anyway, go ahead and ask.
I'm trying to think if there's any exception or anything that, any.
The, the only thing, Trustee Johnson, I would say is that we mix use when they do a part commercial and part residential. And so we can, we can separate that.
I think I'd just say that we'd leave it to your discretion if you feel like you need more particular directions from the board than because it doesn't fall by the side anymore. I think if it's, if it's on Meridian Road, on our main commercial corridors, then I wouldn't have any problem with, with supporting it. If it's something that is a little outside the norm, we're a little, a little different than, you know, user discretion as far as, for the direction of that. Does, does anybody know how much more, like percentage-wise, commercial taxes are compared to residential?
So last council meeting, the district ladies and the council were attending at two, were select 80/20, 8% residential, 20% commercial.
I thought it was a lot less than that. I thought the assessor, I thought it was like 88 to 12.
88 to 12, yeah.
According to, according to from the council, that's what they said, they're select 80.
And it might have been within the city versus our school district, too.
Yeah, it could be different there.
Yeah, because we have a little bit different boundaries. But it, it has historically been, it was 90/10, it got a little bit more, so it was 88/12, but still 88% of our, our tax base for our school district is moms and dads and grandmas and grandpas that we serve.
Isn't it true that commercial, that commercial tax base, like if you compared it to residential tax base, it, like commercially, they pay more.
Yeah, because the value.
A lot more.
The value of the commercial, a lot of technically, a lot more of the one in control house, I guess, a broader basis taking.
So, so is the taxes still?
So, so is the taxes still, uh, accumulated according to how much the worth is of that commercial? So it's the same formula as it would be for residential? Okay.
And they don't bring kids with them usually. I mean, eventually, probably kids come, but that, it doesn't come with kids necessarily.
Okay, so, um,
We need to
Yeah.
I made a motion. You just need to say.
Can you say it again?
Yes. Okay. I make a motion that we give Robbie and Danielle the authority to create a letter that would be the support of the school district for new commercial developments in the city.
Okay.
I'll second.
Call favor, Kersi.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, oh, second reading of policy six eighty-one, Director Graves.
Yeah, so this one was pulled back two months ago. And I, I have all the updates that were changed. Um, we reviewed this with Director of Technology, Jason Reddy, and Director of Communications, Allison Westphal. We realized that in our policies, there were eight, I think, active policies that were in regards to student records. And there were a lot of contradictions. For instance, policy two seventy-seven, two seventy-six, now will be updated, reviewed with our committee in February. Policy six eighty-one, you'll hear today during first read. And then we wanted to just double check cross-references, make sure everything, because in regards to student records, this is what you this is what you, you guys are careful as you're feeling, because everyone leaves you. Nobody wants, nobody, you guys are all here for policy, thank you. But we wanted especially six eighty-one point five and six eighty-one, they weren't, they did talk and they were in complete contradiction. So we feel that we've corrected all those, so I'll go through this really quickly. On page one and two, this is the parent definition. We went ahead and grabbed the parent definition straight from the right old policy that one oh-two, just so it matched. And that's the legal definition of what primary physical custody and non-primary physical custody, just didn't make any sense. It just said parent. And it was so, so we, we wanted that to match. Um, on page two, uh, we started, the health records is what really tripped us up. So in policy six eighty-one point five, they define what a health record is. Remember, these are records that we keep from students after they've left us. So health records is not a school record. So we've eliminated wherever it said health records. We just, that way that students' immunizations, whatever health records, those are not what are being kept. It's just their transcript. So again, we deleted immunization records from page two. On page three, we updated the timeframe to match our practice from five years to two years. It's just as we grow, this is a lot of records that we're keeping. These are students that have left us. So to keep those records, we, we keep the transcript, we keep their, their, their records that are to help us school. But graduated years, to keep them five years, it was just a, it becomes a long process. Um, we added on page five, videos to directory information. On page five, we also added, um, four social media channels to directory information. Social media is one of those things that has changed a lot in the last five years, so just to update that. And then on page seven, we deleted a cross-reference to policy six eighty-one, form two, because we do not have that at all. So those are the changes that were made by our group and we were trying to make these policies not contradict. And this was a policy you guys had read at, heard first read in September.
I had no issues with it just because it defines everything.
That's a super long policy.
It is a super long policy that all needs to be in there with the definitions of it. I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading of policy six eighty-one, student records.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Call favor, Joy.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Aye. Russ.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to new business, financial statements. CFO Feather. Oh, yes.
Chairman Grant, trustees, um, we're going to have an auditor, Morgan, to present the one, if you don't mind. And he's going to share the slides. And it's a sixty-page document, so we're gonna allow him to flip in between pages in case if you have any questions. So Morgan, we're ready for you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I hope everyone can see me and hear me well. And my name is Harvey Browning, I'm an audit manager with I B A C. Signed to the unit, I'm a school district attorney. And it's a pleasure to present the results of the fiscal year, uh, twenty-three audit. To you this evening, my plan is to go over our report. That would be, uh, that would be issue where you can bring the report. And then open it up to any questions that you have about the audit. I am going to share my screen, so bear with me just a little bit. Now there, now if you can see it all.
Yeah, yeah, we can see it.
Wonderful, wonderful. So you guys can go ahead and interrupt me, uh, at any time, uh, if you have questions. I'll do my best to, um, to, uh, answer as we go. So the first report, I'm gonna go over our report, in the independent audit report. This is our primary, um, report. Um, it, it discusses management's responsibility. Uh, four pages long, I have to give it to you in a nutshell, uh, for preparing these financial statements. Uh, that, that is a merit for deemed responsibility. And, uh, there's also responsible managers, also responsible for establishing internal controls sufficient to prevent and detect material mistakes in these, uh, financial statements. So that, that is about management's responsibility with respect to the financial statements that are in this audit. Um, our responsibility in audits is to express an opinion as to the accuracy and the liability of these financial statements. To do various procedures, uh, over about a four-week time span, confirmation, the, and fact document, red association, evidence, procedure. And based on the body of evidence that we accumulate, we render an opinion as to the accuracy and the liability of the financial statement. The, uh, opinion that we're rendering is a term in our profession that's qualified, opinion. And that is because, uh, the district has made a conscious decision to omit a, um, other post-employment benefit liability that's required by general accepted accounting principles. The, uh, particular liability, uh, is another post-employment benefit plan liability. It would require an actuary to come in and, uh, that's made what that liability is. And it's, so as long as I've been the auditor, the district has just never done that. So that is, that is qualification. And, um, for everything else in terms of the financial statements, uh, we read it's efficient and appropriate evidence that the financial statements are, uh, fairly stable. So the, uh, last paragraph of this report is giving reference to a second report as required by government auditing standards. So, uh, we do the audit for government audit standards and that requires, uh, that requires a second report uh, with regard to internal controls. So that report is on page fifty-one. Stand through there. So there's basically, this is a, for a two-page report. Um, there's two aspects of this report. One is internal control over financial reporting and the other is compliance. So as auditors, as part of our audit, we're required to look at the design and implementation of your internal controls. We don't actually express an opinion as to the adequacy of your internal controls. But if we have a lot of corrections during the giving us, we're not accurate and we have proposed a lot of adjustments. This report would reference finance. So for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, um, place a report to you that affected internal control for financial reporting, uh, you think you had no finance, uh, to report. And, and I think that's going to take the long, well, it's longer merits than, it's like a credit for her. Uh, the other aspect of this report is, uh, compliance, you know, there matters. It's part of the government auditing standards. We look at their grant agreements, we look at state statutes, uh, we look at laws and regulations, um, that pertain to units proliferate the, you know, that could have a material impact on the financial statements announced. And if we have instances of not compliance that we detected in our audit, this report would also refer, would reference funding. So for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, with respect to compliance, uh, we know with no of non-compliance, so we had no finance. And, uh, that's, that's good news. Um, the third report that I'm going to discuss is a report on compliance with, uh, federal programs, major programs. So, uh, as you know, you get federal, uh, funds. And as part of our audit, uh, we're required to, um, audit those studies. So we, we don't test all your programs. We use a, a risk-based approach, uh, that entails quantitative qualification efforts to, uh, select programs we can. So, uh, the programs that we tested, the federal programs that tested, were the child and transition cluster, uh, program and two COVID-nineteen, but one of them is ESAR. And, and the other one is state local fiscal recovery fund. So those are the three programs, um, that we focused on. Now, uh, with respect to our federal programs audit, our objective is to issue you an opinion as to whether or not the district comply and all materials effectively comply to the requirements of that program. So, um, for all three programs, uh, we are, we are concluding that the district did comply, uh, with the, with the compliant part. That's very good news and, uh, you know, whereas, well, I've been the auditor, I believe that plays the case that we, you know, should clean up on compliance. The other aspect of this report is internal control over compliance. So we, not only do we have to issue an opinion as to whether I comply, we look at internal controls that the district had in place to ensure that there is any non-compliance and that you follow the, um, rules associated with those, with those federal, um, programs. So, uh, in this case, we do have one finding, uh, related to the child and transition, uh, program cluster. Uh, one of the compliance requirements, uh, associated with that program is procurement. So as part of, uh, as part of that audit, we look at procurement, uh, with federal funding. And, um, number one, make sure as we comply, okay, and part of that entails looking at state procurement code and make sure you comply with those requirements. The other aspect is that the district followed, um, all its internal controls with respect to procurement. So in one instance, uh, there was a procurement of camera tools that served in August, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Um, I believe it was at a time, uh, that you were in transition with your assistant superintendent and all that. And what happened is that, uh, the results of that procurement, uh, and the award never got presented to the board. So your policy's saying, you know, the board has to procure, has to approve procurements, um, over a certain threshold. In this case, that wasn't presented. Um, I will say that we looked at the state procurement code and we looked at the files, uh, that we were presenting with during the audit. We included that you followed all the rules associated with the state procurement code. Uh, with respect to the district's policy, it wasn't presented to the board for approval. So, um, we are, uh, presenting a finding as a result of, of that. And, um, you know, that's the, the only finding that we have associated with, uh, for and I, I, I'm reiterating that that due date wasn't at a time tended, so it's been all filed. So, um, so that's pretty much in a nutshell. This is the summary of the audit results as I just, um, expressed. Uh, you had a qualified opinion for that liability, uh, you had no internal control, uh, findings, you had no not compliance. Um, you have one, one finding related to both, what we just discussed, and you have clean opinion on your federal programs. Uh, so with that, that's kind of it. I want, I wanted to open it up. Uh, if any, uh, questions, press the board. Mel Scott, sharing my screen, so to see what you have.
Morgan, um, this is Almira. Are you going to talk about the general fund balance briefly? I think it's on page fifteen, to at least like mention the, the final amount.
Sure, but, um, yeah, I can basically do that. So if you want to
Thank you.
The district's financial position is very strong, uh, and we can go with the fund perspective. We can look at pages thirteen. At least actually, it's on, um, at page thirteen, this shows, uh, the district's fund balance, uh, for its funds, this right here. Uh, you can see at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, the general fund balance was eight, um, eight million dollars. Uh, and in the next, uh, couple pages over, you can see that the district's fund balance and the general fund increased uh, by two point five million dollars, uh, during the fiscal year, and it turned six point two million to eight point eight million. Um, you can see that, uh, the district's fund balance as a percentage of their total expenditure during the year is about twenty-two percent, eight point eight million, uh, divided by thirty, thirty-nine point seven million. But it's a pretty strong, uh, cushion, I would say, in terms of your total annual expenditures. And then, uh, you can, I've got a page here, page forty-eight, that shows how the district's general fund, uh, did in comparison with its budget. Uh, you can see that, um, total revenues were higher than, uh, budget revenue by one point three million. You can see that in total, uh, your expenditures, uh, were within your, your final budget amount. And you can look at my, uh, function, you can see what the, what the variance is compared to your budget. So in general, we expect to support services, you, your, your expenditure for, for within your, uh, budget, and you're, uh, you were, you were thinking, uh, final budget. So, um, whatever parts of the financial thing, uh, you think we should discuss, I'm there, something out there. Um, one of the things I noted during the audit, uh, was that the district paid down its debt, had a huge thesis of, of debt and that for the past two years, um, with respect to, uh, serious twenty-seventeen bonds. And so obviously, uh, you continue to take big chunks of, of debt and to tease that debt. Um, of last year, this year, and I believe for next year as well. So that's one thing that it spit out is that is a conscious vision to reduce, uh, your box payable, um, lowering your debt service. Um, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll open up any questions that the board has. I can go over the details of this report. Um, and, and other questions you have.
Can you tell us, um, how that, uh, fund balance compares to other districts in the state? I mean, are other districts having a fund balance of that size?
Yeah, I think, I think twenty percent, uh, cushion is, 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 is pretty much in line, uh, quarterly, I'll be on it, near the school district, we'll be on it with data, we'll, I'm not involved all the time. Uh, but I do just to make sure we're reporting, um, uh, consistently and treating it consistently. I, I will say that the, uh, it's about twenty, twenty percent to thirty percent cushion, I would say, that compared to your expenditure. So the eight point, we look at the ratio of fund balance, eight point eight million, uh, to expenditure, that's at about twenty-two percent. That's pretty much in line with that we're looking at in terms of, of how much to satisfy, you know, how much to satisfy and keep there for unforeseen, uh, expenditure. Uh, even if we say it's like, it's about thirty-three percent, uh, you know, the penalty activity. Um, but I, I would say it's, it's your fund balances are you know, penalty activity. Um, but I, I would say it's, it's your fund balances are, are aligned with other schools, depending on how much to keep there.
Vice Chairman Thomas, remember the intentionality of the budget setting. We're always looking a couple of years ahead, especially with the ESSER funds, knowing that that clip was there. Trying to save, which is, would be like a drastic cut.
Exactly. So that we won't have to be cutting a bunch of things because we lost ESSER funds. We can rely on the savings that we've built.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Almira. This is, it's wonderful news, this part. Um, do you have any recommendations for us as far as what we need to do to make sure that we don't have the issue of it not being presented to the board again, um, with the, uh, the federal food program, I guess, is what it was called.
Yeah, I am sure.
Almira.
Wait, it's Almira. All right.
Yeah, I think Almira has, has that covered. Um, we have a recommendation we have on page sixty. Um, and it's pretty much in line with what Almira did immediately, um, when she knew there was, there was going to be a finding. That's to add an additional layer of control, uh, to ensure procurement is spread to get the dollars to move to the board. So I think Almira has the control in place at the finance level, uh, to double check to make sure all departments are reporting, uh, to the board what Almira was supposed to do. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, yes. Um, so, thank you, Morgan. Morgan did a great job diving into the details. So I'm going to summarize. Looks like we have good news and there is room for improvement. There's always room for improvement. The good news, the fund balance is at twenty-two percent. Um, yes, um, there is, the, the state revenue came back a little bit more than we budgeted. We always budgeted less and hoped for more. And then we had one-time revenue, um, different type of revenues. It was interest earned because we keep our fund balance in the local government investment pool. Um, you might know it as LGIP. So old school districts keep their funds in there. So the larger your balance is, the more interest you earn. And I'm talking about general fund balance. And, um, and as we know, interest rates are quite high nowadays. So that is a one-time, it comes in guarantee next year. So if interest rate goes down, then the revenue, the, the revenue earnings on interest go down as well. And then we had a lot of mini grants from health and welfare department. And because of that, we were able to use federal funds instead of general funds. Um, unfortunately, those grants expired last year, but we still used a moment and saved our general funds because we're getting ready for the next year where we are transitioning, um, because a lot of ESSER, not all ESSER funds, ESSER funds, just their micro, it's a pandemic relief funds that expire next year. So that's good news. So I feel good about our transition next year. And just a reminder, when we are talking about twenty-two percent, we're talking about the past, right? The school year that has ended. Now, speaking about present, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, just a reminder, we are without supplemental levy. So we are going to use two point five million dollars out of that eight million dollars to balance our revenue expenses. So we are already transitioning right now and ESSER funds are expiring. So it's, it's a, that's fine. So that's a, that's a good fund balance to move into this and next year. Now, to address the finding, um, like I said, there is always room for improvement. I really appreciate audit because it's a second set of eyes and that's how we make our process better. The good news, our amazing child nutrition team, they followed federal register and Idaho code. They followed the RFP process. RFP is request for proposal. That means they went to the board initially to have a motion to get a permission to go and look for a new vendor. So that happened and then they followed Idaho code. That means there was a request for proposal. There was an advertisement. And, um, Shamrock Company is actually the only company that has the capacity to deliver, to deliver all the food from all the manufacturers here in Treasure Valley. So they're only the only one who responded. And this is where the discommunication happened. They were under the impression since it's only the only company that responded, that, you know, that you need to present a second time, which is based on our policy. We still do for transparency. One vendor, five vendors, we still have to let you know. So we added an additional layer of control. So we're going to help our vendors. So right now, all the contracts are going to go through our business department and each contract is going to be filed with a checklist. The checklist is designed based on the threshold and the checklist is to do this, to do that, to do that. Sign only, given for signature when all these steps are completed. And the checklist is actually uploaded with the first initial requisition. So that's, that's a way of us, because we're all humans, that's the way of us helping each other. If you forgot, I'll remind you. If I forgot, you'll remind me. So I feel really good about this process. We learn a lot and it makes us stronger. And with that, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Good job.
Thank you.
I appreciate the fact that we still have no findings other than the one, one thing. So thank you very much.
We have an amazing team.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for letting me present and, and deal, Almira, for.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. So moving on to the CTE computer lab.
You didn't break that.
I'm sorry. Okay. We have a motion to accept the financial statement.
I make a motion that we accept the financial statement from Morgan Brownie and Vivi Bailey.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Joy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Now moving on to the purchase of the CTE computers. Director, ready?
Sir, Chairman Grant, trustees, I'll be super fast. Um, but.
You have to explain your shirt first.
Oh, yes. It doesn't explain itself?
Kind of does.
We had, uh, so I apologize for my attire tonight, but, um, we celebrated text giving. So technology, text giving. We did a Thanksgiving pop-up today with our staff. So cool. I was trying to be festive. Um, I have a nice fancy hat that I'll wear for Christmas too. It lights up. I'll just be super excited. Make sure and do it on Tuesday for you.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, this will be fast. So just, we just need, based on what we just heard, right? We need you guys to approve us to be able to purchase, um, some computers for one of our CTE, uh, computer labs. Um, we had a couple of teachers go to some training and, um, our CTE department is ready. Needs to update labs. Um, it's, this is kind of a natural process for us. And so they saw some really cool things that Adobe can do with, um, some of the Mac, Apple things that Windows computers just can't do. I want that in minutes, but.
I was wondering why we're switching. It seems like we've always been Windows, but now we're going Mac. How long have we been going Mac?
We're not going Mac. Um, this is, I think, in my, this is more about like kids need to be able to know how both of these systems work. And we need to help people be comfortable in, in any of them. Cause in our working world, they could be on any system. Uh, and so this is giving them exposure to both of those things. And also there, there really are some just like creative things that you can do on a, on a Apple computer that, that maybe aren't as functional in other spaces. So, um, having options for kids, having options for teachers, those kinds of things is really kind of what we're trying to accomplish here. Yeah.
I had the question, is the money coming from ESSER funds or is this like coming out of our? So this is part of that.
It, it's coming out of CTE funds, the funds that we receive from the, yes, from the state.
Okay. I just wanted to know that too.
And where are the forty computers going?
To New High School.
And they're all going to the high school?
Yeah, they'll be in one lab. Yep. Right. And we currently have, um, I'm going to say nine Apple computers in that lab that are barely limping along. Uh, so this, this isn't really like a huge change. There's already a mix of Windows and Apple devices in that one lab. We're just going to kind of create one lab that is kind of, it's a ecosystem.
I liked it for making our students successful in the outside world after they graduate. I think that shuts through that.
Okay. Charlie, can you make your motion?
I'll make a motion that we consider the purchase of the CTE computers for Mac lab.
Do you have a second?
I will second.
On favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ. I think we should approve the purchase, not just consider the purchase.
Okay.
I'll accept that in a minute.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
On all favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much, Sherri's. Okay. Um, first reading of policies discussed in the policy advisory committee, trustee Thompson, Thomas and director Graves.
I have brief summaries, obviously, if you have any questions. Uh, the first one is a recommendation to adopt new policy. Um, it will be actually six fifteen. Um, and this policy clarifies who can participate in the graduation ceremony and the speaker content at the graduation ceremony. Um, this has been reviewed by all of our high school principals and then it was actually sent back for a clarification on foreign exchange students. And we did that at the last meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept policy six fifteen in the first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Joy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, the second one is four forty employment of certificated employees. The recommendation is to combine this policy with policy four forty-four. Um, this most recent, this has been updated with most recent amendments and updates to Idaho code thirty-three, five fourteen and Idaho code thirty-three, five fifteen in regards to category three, the definition of what a category three teacher is and the definition of what an interim certification is. Um, we met with our HR team and twice with our HR, our, um, negotiation collaboration team.
So we can, we could probably combine the actions on four forty and four forty-four, couldn't we?
Yeah, four forty-four is then obviously to remove.
So I make a motion that we, uh, approve on first reading of, uh, policy four forty and remove, uh, policy four forty-four in conjunction. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
Aye. Russ. Kirsty.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I love the two for one. You'll start to see more and more of this kind of like spring cleaning, getting rid of three policies for the price of one. Uh, the next one is the recommendation for six oh four, um, elementary school required instruction. And this, this number will be six oh four. Um, this policy, our recommendation is to amend and the updated with Idaho code, references to Idaho code thirty-three, five oh six and Idaho code thirty-three, five twelve, as well as quite a few IDAP references.
We have a couple of questions on this one. I thought it was interesting that you added cursive writing. Is that something from the state?
Yep.
That we have, it's required? And is that something that we're doing?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Third grade?
Yeah. Well, I taught third grade for years, so that, that's one question. And then the other thing I wanted to take a look at, uh, and it's not a big deal, but, um, when I was looking at the social studies, it has history, government, geography, economics, current world affairs, social, sociology. Um, I remember we had community at one time also teaching of community. Um, so I don't know if that needs to be added to that or if it's even being taught anymore. That was one thing I noticed.
Yep. That's still a part of the social studies curriculum.
So that's, I just wondered if we needed to add that in there.
We sure could.
So just community. Well, I.
Is it different?
It says will include instruction in history, government, geography, economics, current world affairs, citizenship and sociology. I don't know, maybe, maybe community would go under citizenship. I just know it's something that we, we do teach, so I don't know.
Kind of go more local to.
We do.
U S to broader. Yeah.
We do. And I know we taught, I taught community history for a long time. So, and I know second grade did like police, you know, the mayor and that kind of stuff. So I didn't know if that needed to be put in or not, but I'm just suggesting that it might be, it just adds to.
I mean, I think citizenship could include that, but I don't think it would really hurt anything if we wanted to have that word in there as well. So.
So we could add that in for the second reading? Yep.
All right. Then I, then I would.
It'll give you another reason to talk to you guys.
Oh, okay.
So you make your motion?
I was going to. Is that okay? What did he, I, what did you say? I'm sorry.
Oh, she said we would present again.
Oh, okay.
Cause I would have to add that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept, um, which policy is this?
Six oh four.
Six oh four. Thank you. Policy six oh four with, uh, the addition of community in the social studies, number four for the next reading. You know? Okay.
You, we're just going to accept this as the six oh four first reading?
Okay.
And then he will add that and we will.
Come back. I'll come back after the presentation.
Okay, got it. Got it. I'm so glad you teach me. I got it.
So it's just.
I will, okay. I make a motion that we accept policy number six oh four.
I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
For us.
Aye.
Aye. Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Moving on to policy six twelve.
I credit my examination. This is only a policy that is specific to secondary. This is recommend to amend. Keep the number six twelve updated with references to Idaho code thirty-three, five oh six and Idaho code five twelve again and the IDAP references. This is specific to transferring in credits from non-accredited items.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, policy six twelve on the first reading. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
On favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to policy six thirty-four.
Six oh two, five one oh one, as well as IDAP references.
I'll make a motion that we approve policy six thirty-four on the first reading.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Volunteer Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to six, uh, forty-one.
Uh, six forty-one is citizenship, U S constitution, national flags and colors. There was a very small addition added at the top and then a lot of legal references that were updated.
I'll make a motion that we accept the first reading of policy six forty-one.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Joy, second. Um, Kirsty.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to policy six, six fifty-seven point one zero.
This is the halfway point. Um, six fifty-seven point one zero. So obviously we had to get a little creative with the number right here because of other policies. This is homebound instruction for non-IDEA. Um, remember that's individual? Oh my gosh.
Individual is disability, education act.
Um, just in case you, go ahead.
Students on a.
Just to clarify, cause I needed the clarification myself. Um, this is for, these are, this is for kids who don't have a final four or an I E.
Correct.
And are at home maybe because they have cancer or some.
Or they weight their weight or something.
Yeah, some situation like that.
Yep.
Yeah, it's gotta be more than ten days that they're going to go to school. So, uh, the recommendation is to adopt this new policy. This defines who is eligible for homebound instruction, non-IDEA with ten day minimum requirement and defines who the instructor will be. and it defines who the instructor will be.
And then
It also mentioned that they will count towards our A K.
And then six fifty-seven is for those that are on ID E A and allow those other extra services.
Yeah, and we might add copy that attendance. I P is a little bit easier to grab the attendance. Still provide the instruction.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the first reading of policy six fifty-seven, homebound services I D. And six fifty-seven point one, homebound instruction, non-ID.
I'll second that.
Volunteer Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Aye, Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we just did both of those, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, moving on to six sixty, technology.
Uh, the recommendation is to amend. This is with reference to Idaho Code and I D A P updates and multiple legal reference updates at the front. Almost all the legal references were updated.
I guess one thing we learned, we need distance learning in case we're under pandemic setting, that was a new thing to put in.
Why do you tell?
I know, really. I had a lot of things on that, but yeah, I just looked at that and, okay.
So I'll make a motion that we approve policy six sixty on first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Joy.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to policy six seventy.
Uh, special education recommendation to amend. Uh, in the past, this always had, you had to do it every time the special ed manual was updated, you had to update the policy. Now, they just do a reference to the most current special ed manual, so like, you don't have to omit it every time.
The only question I have about this one was, it says option A, but you took out option B, so do you need to have option A in there?
Oh, you're right, we should, that's what you crossed.
Yeah. That was my only thing on this one.
And I bet you, like, the committee said that, too. Cause they're really good at that in comments. I don't know what an Oxford comment is.
That was the only thing I saw on this one.
That probably wouldn't need to come back to you as a separate
No, that's just Okay, so we just, does it have to be in the motion, cause I'm learning on this.
Okay. Diane, you should fix that.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept policy numbers, uh, six seventy first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All favor, Joy.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
Aye, Russ.
Aye.
Kirsty.
Aye.
Motion carries, policy six eighty-one dash five oh.
You heard me re- or uh, referenced this earlier today. This is the protection of student data. Recommendation is to amend based on the model policy by the State Department required by Idaho Code thirty-three one thirty-three and updates to make current alongside with policy six eighty-one, which you guys read for side of the page earlier today.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve policy six eighty-one point five on first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Joy.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to policy six, or eight sixty-eight.
Uh, use of school district credit cards recommend to amend with updates to Idaho Code and sections in the legal reference.
I was fine with this one, too, so I'll make a motion that we accept the first reading of policy eight sixty-eight. Use of school district credit cards.
I'll second that.
All favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Aye, Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to policy nine seventy.
Uh, service animals recommend to amend the policy with updates, simplify the policy, and by removing, now they just go from there to the end.
I just had a little question about this one, not, I'm fine with the service animals.
A miniature question.
I mean, it's very small, very small, very small. Do they have class pets or anything anymore? Just curious.
Some people, yeah.
Okay. And, and is that in our policy anywhere, or does it?
About class pets.
Or is it just
I don't believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Would you like to see a policy on that?
I don't know, no, I just wondered if it, if that was something that was fitting here. I don't know, I'm fine with this one, I just, was a question that came up as I was reading.
It, it would define, cause it defines what a service animal is.
Yeah, a pet, a pet would not be a service animal, but I just wondered if they had this. I personally kinda like dogs, so what can I say?
We did have some fun with the miniature horse.
Yes.
I did, I did see the miniature horse, and I was like, what is that?
One of the schools may want to buy a miniature horse for the whole school.
So I thought maybe that's a class pet, huh?
Somebody has to donate that day.
Yeah, okay, I, I have no problem with this. I will say, uh, make a motion that we accept policy nine seventy, service animals first reading.
Do we have a second? Yeah, I'll second that. All favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ. Aye. Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to policy nine eighty-two.
Kim's gonna correct me here, cause I'm gonna say wrong. Use of
No locks. No locks.
They said, uh, this is a recommendation to adopt a new policy.
This is a brand-new policy.
It's so needed, it's been needed for a long time, so I'm very happy to see this policy.
I'm happy to see it, too, because as much as I don't, I wish we would use it or have it.
Right.
It's needed. But I guess my question was, and maybe it's in here more, um, was where's it gonna be kept on someone's self in the
Right now, the only two staff members as well, not even two, so our school nurse, obviously, and then our school resource officers are the only two that can provide, the school resource officers technically are on our staff, they're
So where is this drug kept, and is it in the nurse's office?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just
And our S R O keep them on them.
On them.
Yeah.
Is it at the high school, or is it the middle school?
It's in, every one of our S R O's grade, and all our school nurses. Cause you may run into a, a parent, or a grandparent, or a guardian, or someone that may need it as well during the ministry. So, um, hopefully, so far, no one has.
I'm glad that we were proactive on this, and that we've got this in here, so, um.
Has it been used before in other schools?
Mm-hmm.
In other schools?
Not in our district, but yes, yes.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve policy nine eighty-two on first reading, and I will second that.
All favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Joy.
Motion carries, thanks, Director Graves, appreciate it. Give of the order, ISBA Annual Convention, November fifteenth through seventeenth, that Boise Center on the Road.
That starts tomorrow, even if you come for just a, a session. It would be beneficial to our board.
It's beneficial to everybody.
Yeah.
We have very Uh, I have a good of the order also, just real quick, I'll make a quick pre-ress. Um, we're starting our hundred-year celebration of graduates here in Kuna. I'm excited to be on that committee. And we're gonna start a kickoff with the downtown, down-home Christmas parade, which will be December ninth. And we're going to be having a old-fashioned school bus that'll carry some of our alumni with our kids handing out cards to let them know about the upcoming events that we'll be doing. And um, Wendy has a chance to, our assistant, Superintendent Johnson, has a chance to give us Model Ts. And we thought it'd be kinda fun if the board would ride in those cars that night um, to kinda kick off this celebration of a hundred years of Kuna graduates, which I think is totally awesome. So we just need to know if you would be able to, kinda, because we may have teleforms, we have to, to do that. It'll be December ninth, so that I think is four, is that before or next?
Yeah.
Meaning, so yeah, so that's the good of the order. Really some neat things planned, I'm excited about it. The kids are really doing some great things, so, and it's been fun to, you know, hold us a little Kuna graduates. So I found someone that graduated nineteen forty-seven, Doris Wheeler.
Ah.
So I think she's gonna be our oldest Kuna graduate, so it should be fun. So, anyway, so if you could let us know tonight, so that Diane could, if we need to have a special.
Send out some details to you, too.
That would be great.
Does anybody know how to drive a Model T or a Model A in our
I thought, who would do that?
Well, I was wondering if anybody had done it before, before I have to learn, so, or you have to be with my grandpa dad. Well, there's, he has two, so we could slowly
Yeah, the guy who's driving the school bus happens to be an old, or not an old, he's a Kuna graduate, his name's Eric Gar- Garsole, Garsole. And he owns the bus that was once here, and so there'll be room for about twelve adults on that bus. So the kids are gonna decorate it with Christmas lights and banners, and it should be kind of a fun way to start off. And keep your fingers crossed, I'm trying to make it so that we won't have to pay an entry fee for school. So keep your fingers crossed, they're thinking about it.
Yeah, right.
So that's the good of the order, guys.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? I'm gonna adjourn.
I'll second that for you, Russ.
All favor, Kirsty.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
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 Okay.
I was gonna vote against on the last
We've got one more.
We've got one more.